All right, let's try that again. Welcome, and the, once again, the regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, October 19th, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, we will once again be all operating under some altered procedures consistent with the terms of Governor Hope Combs' various executive orders. To that end, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments one person at a time as they wish to make. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his or her public comment, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphones on mute, and we thank you, one and all, for your cooperation. With that, we will now move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in remembrance of the more than 220,000 Americans who have lost their lives as the result of COVID-19, including Mishawaka resident and friend of several of us, Mrs. Peg Van Nevel.
I feel that the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the rich sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice sworn.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Demade?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of October 5th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a letter from the Mishawaka City Plan Commission regarding their recommendations from their October 13th, 2020 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Plan Commission was held on the above-referenced date, at which time the following proposed ordinance was considered. Petition number 20-07, a petition submitted by the City of Mishawaka Municipal Water Utility, requesting to amend the city's north well-filled Grandview planned unit development to permit an elevated water storage tank not to exceed 150 feet in height. The Commission with a vote of seven to zero recommended approval, subject to the following conditions, if I can omit reading the lengthy conditions.
Please do so.
Pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-605, Mishawaka Plan Commission hereby certifies to the Mishawaka Common Council the attached proposed ordinance regarding the above matter. This is signed by Kerry Myers, Administrative Planner and Secretary to the Plan Commission.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-37, an ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and reappropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2020. This is a transfer of funds in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund in the amount of $10,000.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-37 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-38, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow an elevated wider water storage system tank not to exceed 150 feet in height.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-38 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Resolutions.
Resolution R. 2020-21, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, introducing an ordinance for annexation, adopting a written fiscal plan and a definite policy for annexation for the property located at 15165, 15195, and 15201 Cleveland Road, Ranger, Indiana, all being vacant parcels.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-21. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Prince.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. Ken Prince, City Planner. The fiscal plan for you this evening is for three properties, a total of 3.4 acres located on the north side of Cleveland Road. This is immediately to the west of three acres that were previously annexed to the city for multifamily development. In this case, the developer is looking to add the property for a larger development, and you have a vote scheduled for that later this evening. The property itself is 50% contiguous to the city and exceeds, obviously, the 12.5% acquired by law. The fiscal plan was distributed to all applicable city departments, all indicated they could serve under their existing budget, and that no additional expenses within those budgets would be required to service the property. I believe that covers it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir. Anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
This is Dustin, I'm actually the developer of that project, so any questions that you guys might have, I'd be happy to answer, but we're excited about bringing a product to an area that doesn't really exist right now in the south end Ranger Mishawaka area. We thought it would be a great addition, so we look forward to working with you guys on that as we project just north here on Ranger Street. I think you guys have seen that standard well, and we're looking forward to getting on to this one.
Sir, thank you for your comments. Due to the technology, at least I had a little bit of difficulty hearing your name, so if you could say it again, perhaps spell it phonetically, and then give us your address for the record.
Sure, this is Dustin Brown, D-U-S-T-E, just like the color of the U-A.
And the record will show that the kind gentleman attempted to meet my request, but the technology betrayed him even more this time around. So Madam Clerk tells me that she'll be able to solicit the information from the filings, and we are all set. So thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the? Dustin Brown. Thank you. Are there any questions for the developer? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Hearing no one. Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. We will now invite anybody participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution to state your name and address for the record and submit your comments. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes eight to zero. Resolution number R. 2020-22, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adding parcels to the city's property acquisition list associated with a previously approved Common Council Resolution 2014-7, which approved an order of the City of Mishawaka Plan Commission approving a certain declaratory resolution, an amendment to the boundaries of the Northwest Area Improvement Project, consolidation of the South Side Economic Development Area, and the Northwest Improvement Project into one consolidated area improvement project, and an amendment to the economic development plan for the Consolidated Area Improvement Project adapted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-22. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, members of council, Ken Prince, City Planner. As has been discussed multiple times, every time that property is to be purchased by the Redevelopment Commission using TIF funds, that property needs to be added to the city's acquisition list. In 2014, if you remember correctly, the TIF district, we expanded it in numerous locations, extended down roads for projects. We knew at that time that it was impossible, particularly with these spotlight and opportunity acquisitions, to put all the potential properties onto that acquisition list, so we made the conscious decision at that time to bring them to you one by one and have them considered on their merits at that time. This is one of those evenings. So two months ago, we brought before you the proposed acquisition for the Burns Rent Hall property and the homes that were located immediately behind it to the north. Following that acquisition, we were approached by the property owner located immediately east to the main Burns building, the main commercial building on Mishawaka Avenue. This is 324 West Mishawaka Avenue. The property owner asked if we had an interest in purchasing the property, and upon review, just analyzing, we hadn't done it previously, there are actually two homes that existed as rentals on that lot, which is a nonconforming situation in our opinion. It really leaves it for rental in perpetuity. Given that the owner is looking to get out of the business, they contacted us, they had other interested parties, at least one, we decided to take a look at it and determine that it would be beneficial with the acquisition of the Burns properties to add it, because, again, in our mind, it either gives more property available for the Burns redevelopment, or at worst, if the Burns building is demolished, it will provide an additional lot for a single-family home rather than the multi-homes that are on the property at this point in time. So really, we looked at it as an opportunity. In looking at the neighborhood, the area behind it is all owned to the church to the east of what the Burns, of what the Burns Rent Hall had owned behind it, and then to the east of this lot at 324 is also all single-family homes. So we do not picture bringing you any more acquisitions associated with this redevelopment area than this lot here before you this evening. I did send you the, it's not the role of this council to approve the actual purchase agreement, but I included that in the information materials just from your reference. I would note that we have had appraisals performed and did appraise slightly more than what the offer has been made for. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Let me try to understand, is there a second house to join this house?
Right.
Yes. Is that a fashion?
A lot of those happened when Uniro was going in its heyday, and people were looking for opportunities for more housing, and that's how those situations, is my understanding, were developing.
Yeah, yeah. So then, would your plan be, or is the redevelopment commission's plan, that that lot would be included as a parcel with the Burns?
So at a minimum, so if the main commercial building at Burns, the decision has not been made of that, nor have we acquired it, we're looking to closing it first November. That commercial building stays, it's at a minimum, will be a buffer of potentially parking or access to the rear property yet to be determined, but in any event, it would remove the nonconforming situation. If we proceed with the purchase, our recommendation to the Redevelopment Commission is that these two homes will be demolished at the same time as the single-family homes that are located behind the main commercial Burns building. So regardless, if this is acquired by the city, our intent is to demolish these two homes.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? We will then move into anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution. If you would, please come forward. And then we will invite anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution to please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Are there any council members who wish to speak? I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Prince and his department for the continuing work that they're doing on this project. I myself continue to believe that the acquisition of Burns, as well as these surrounding properties, is a net positive for not only the community, but for that neighborhood in particular, both in terms of being able to potentially produce some, you know, fairly serious traffic hazards when the park is being used and people are trying to cross, and then to further add to the various amenities that are made available to the community by the park itself. So thank you, Ken, for the work that you and your staff are doing on this. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-32, an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, providing zoning classification therefore. This is proposed multifamily town home development, 15165, 15195, and 15201 Cleveland Road.
Thank you. It appears that this matter has been assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee, so may we have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Committee on Land Use Planning, we would approve the matter of proposed ordinance number 2020-32. Report that they have examined said matter, and their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report is accepted with an eight to zero vote.
Thank you. Consistent with Indiana law, a public hearing was held on this matter at our prior immediately preceding council meeting. So at this point in time, we will move into a vote, subject to any questions or comments that a council member may wish to make. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes eight to zero. Proposed ordinance number 2020-33, this is the Civil City Budget and Tax Levy for 2021.
Thank you.
And here is vote only as well.
Now, we have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your Committee on Budget and Finance, with whom was referred to the matter of proposed ordinance, number 2020, Act 33, report that they have examined said matter, and in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee that was present, and I move for its acceptance.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Consistent with the requirements of Indiana law, the record will reflect that we held a public hearing on the Civil City Budget at our last council meeting. So at this point in time, we are authorized to move into a vote, subject to any questions or comments that the council may have. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this point? I do have a couple, and I'll try to make them really brief questions for either the mayor or Mrs. Miller. I'll let you, I'll let you choose. Thank you. And actually, I probably should have picked on the controller rather than you, Your Honor, but. We're here to serve. And we appreciate that. And let me begin by thanking you and the controller and the department heads again for the hard work that goes into putting together the budget every year and bringing it to us. And undoubtedly, this was a different set of challenges that you were faced with this year, but we appreciate the work that you've done, as well as the time that we got to spend with you in the committee and budget and finance meetings. As Mrs. Volker indicated, I like those opportunities to be able to talk about not just the finances of the city, but the other topics that come up. So thank you, one and all, for the time that you spent with us. A couple of questions, you know, and somewhat just to clarify, my reading of the information that we received, and again, Mrs. Miller did a great job of providing us with information, is that the tax rate this year is going to drop slightly compared to last year's tax rate. And I just wanted to make sure that I was looking at it correctly. Is that accurate? That's as far as I understand it.
What rate, what number are you looking?
I'm looking at, and I'm referring to the budget comparison sheet that you provided us with. It appeared to me that the overall tax rate was slightly lower than the 2020 tax rate.
Are you looking at the published tax rate? Can you tell me the number?
I am looking at, on this sheet.
It's like 3.
3.3176, and when I went back to a similar document from last year, it looked like it was 3.3603.
So that is our published tax rate that is typically inflated, just to make sure that we will always be earning our max levy, our maximum amount for tax purposes. Our actual tax rate is always closer to 2, 2.0, 2.1. That's published, that's typically how we do our tax rate, and that's what's also recommended in best practice.
Perfect, that makes perfect sense. But then proportionately, do you anticipate that this year's tax rate will in fact be lower than last year's tax rate?
No, it'll go up a little bit.
Go up a little bit? You know, one of the things that we talked about in some other settings, and again, I apologize to the mayor for picking on him first, rather than you, I probably should have called you up to the podium to begin with. Throughout the budget meetings leading up to this evening, we had talked a little bit about our health insurance renewal rate and where we're at with this, and we had a conversation in another setting just the other day. Is there any information that you can share with us this evening on where we're at with our health insurance renewal for 2021?
Well, it looks like right now, it should be very flat. There were some enrollment numbers that are a little off by our consultant, and they are redoing them right now. They haven't got the final number.
Okay.
That's the good news, yes.
Good news, good year for insurance. Great, thank you. We appreciate that. And then one, you know, final question, perhaps, with regard to the budget that's before us, and again, thank you for the hard work that you do to put this all together. My recollection or my understanding is that embedded within the budget is our contribution toward the funding of the Combined Dispatch Center, or PSAP.
Yeah.
And from prior information, it looks as though our contribution to PSAP will be reduced, and I want to say by 5% this year?
It could be that much, or it's going to stay flat. It's not being increased.
No increase at all. Okay. And then, not so much a question, but a comment. In addition to the good information that you've provided us with, earlier this year, around the summer, we had an opportunity to meet with our financial consultants, and they gave us an overall view of where we stood financially, particularly in conjunction with Baker &amp; Telly, or, I'm sorry, in conjunction with COVID-19. So as, once you get past the budget and as time allows, maybe closer to the end of the year, if we could work to try to have an update with regard to that information, either in writing or another presentation, and if they wanted to participate remotely, again, I don't think that'd be a problem, but I think it behooves us going into the next year of uncertainty to have as much financial information and dialogue as we can.
Same.
Thank you. Any other questions for the controller? Thank you. With that, are there any other questions or comments from the council? And once again, I want to thank the mayor, our controller, the department heads for the work that they did to put this together and the time that they spent with us to explain various elements of the budget, including this evening. I was pleasantly surprised to hear going into this year of uncertainty that we're not only going to be able to maintain our services without any drastic cutbacks, but we're also going to be able to continue to provide compensation increases to our staff. So in particular, I appreciate the hard work that went into that. We certainly are facing an era of uncertainty, but all in all, it could be a lot worse, particularly when you compare us to other communities. One thing that I believe that we need to continue to look at in 2021 is that relationship between ourselves and the Combined Dispatch Center, or PSAP, with regard to our funding obligation. And I appreciate the information that has been shared with us previously in this evening, that at worst, our contribution is going to remain flat, or perhaps reduce a little bit. It still appears to me that there is some inequity built into our contribution to the operation of the PSAP Center. And my hope would be that between the council and the administration, we can work with the other governmental entities in St. Joseph County who participate in PSAP, to try to not only review the efficiency of the operation, but address the inequities that I and others continue to believe are in place. The people who work at the dispatch center do a great job. They're a valuable part of our public safety service orientation toward the community. But as we heard earlier in the year when we received a budget presentation from PSAP officials, they're looking at a 54% cash balance at the end of this year that was projected with regard to their operations. And that's wonderful for them to be in that cash position, but we have any number of needs that I am confident that we'd like to address as well in the area of public safety. So if we can continue to work on that issue, quite frankly, I think most of us hope that there would be something that could be done this year, but with the onset of COVID-19 and some other things, it just became impossible to do. But if we can partner with the administration on that, I think that would be some time well spent. I feel strongly enough about this issue that, although I try to never say never, it's difficult for me to conceive of being able to vote in favor of future budgets if it incorporates the current funding system for the PSAP Center. So with that, if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Budget passes eight to zero, and if you all would please remain after the meeting, because everyone has to sign the budget.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-35, an ordinance fixing the salaries of certain elected officials of the City of Mishawaka for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021.
Thank you. We have the committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your Committee on Budget and Finance, with whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2020, Act 35, report that they have examined said matter, and that their opinion, it should be adopted, and this is signed by the entire committee that was present, and I move for its acceptance.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamelanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report passes eight to zero.
Thank you. This is a second reading of a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-35. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
your name and address for the record.
And again, Mr. Mayor, I apologize for calling you up here delectously a few moments ago.
Like I said, we're here to serve.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, Councilmembers, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to speak in support of proposed ordinance number 2020 dash 35, which is our elected officials' salary ordinance. Now, we do this every year, uh, and, uh, what we are proposing is one and a half percent plus $500. That is the same amount that the bulk of our, uh, full-time equivalent, uh, employees will get, uh, non-collective bargaining staffs and non-public safety, which are still being negotiated. Uh, but we do this, as we do every year, because we think it's the right thing to do. Um, we know the valuable service that our elected officials provide here in Mishawaka. I always say, Mishawaka elected officials stand apart from all other forms of government, in my opinion. Uh, we tend to get along, sometimes more than others, but, uh, we do tend to get along. Uh, and we do things for the best interest of the citizens of Mishawaka. And if you look to our east and to our west, cities our size and slightly bigger, um, we're, um, our citizens are getting a great value for the service that they receive, uh, because others are paid far more than we are. Uh, unfortunately, this year, Mishawaka government specifically, the process of setting these salaries for elected officials has become a part of the current election cycle, specifically for state representative. Uh, two council members are running against each other, one current, one former, squaring off. Uh, the current council member calls into question our utility rates for water and sewer and raises that if our rate increases, and also the elected officials' salary ordinance. Uh, a recent mail piece and a corresponding TV ad, here is the mail piece in my hand, um, insinuate that there is a sleight of hand going on in Mishawaka. Uh, it insinuates that we, and I say we, because I propose and you have approved, uh, have increased our utility rates for the sole purpose of giving ourselves raises. Uh, and that couldn't be further from the truth. Uh, factually, the car, uh, the card, uh, rates did go up, our utility rates did go up, and we also give ourselves raises, as we have every year. Uh, but the two are not connected in any way, shape, or form. As you know, as you're painfully aware, as am I, Mishawaka Utilities, specifically our sewer utility, uh, is, uh, in the midst right now of, of renegotiating our unfunded mandate, our long-term control plan that was, uh, really, um, punitive to the citizens of Mishawaka. It's unfair, and, but yet it's an unfunded mandate from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management and the United States EPA enforced through the United States Justice Department. We have no choice but to live up to that obligation, and unfortunately, that means the work that is required of that, we have to raise rates to get there. The elected official salary ordinance is a function of civil city government. So you've got Mishawaka Utilities, which serves as a nonprofit utility, paid for by the ratepayers of the City of Mishawaka, has a completely separate budget, and, uh, the raises and utility rates do not go to elected official salaries. Uh, then you have the elected official salary ordinance. It's a function of the civil city budget, which is taxpayer-supported. Uh, the two don't co-mingle. We typically give elected officials the same amount that, as I mentioned, that we give our other employees. Uh, we follow the same process as the City of South Bend and all other Indiana municipalities when we give elected officials, uh, when you approve elected officials', um, salaries. And by the way, their council members make a heck of a lot more than you do. So I appreciate the work that you do for, uh, for less money and more professionally in many cases. And by the way, uh, these mail pieces and ads, uh, they also do a disservice to local government. And worse, it undermines people's trust in it, and Mr. Te, Mr. Tezka ought to know better. Some people will say, well, that's just politics. Well, that may be true, but it's bad politics, and it undermines people's trust in our government. And what it involves undermining trust in Mishawaka government, that's when I have a big problem with it. So the sleight of hand is not here in Mishawaka. The sleight of hand comes from the Tezka's campaign and the State Republican Party. Indeed, both parties, negative ads in this race are reprehensible, and I, uh, have been there and, uh, experienced, uh, that, and I can tell you that, uh, um, I, I think it does a disservice to us all. And I just wanted to set the record straight, and I'm confident that the citizens of Mishawaka know that we don't operate like that, that we do our business much better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very well said. Are there any other questions for his honor? Compton?
More of a comment. Thank you, Mayor. Um, been on this council as long as you've been with the city, came on, I think, a cycle after you, maybe, maybe two. Um, and I've never seen, as you said, we have our differences, um, but I've never seen any, um, underhandedness by this council. Um, our raises have been minimal. Uh, council, all the elected officials have always taken what we propose for the non-bargaining unit people, uh, as far as raises, and we've never disputed that. Um, it's just part of doing business. It's, it's disturbing to see those kind of things twisted and used, uh, and it, and it does shed, uh, local government in a bad light. There's enough distrust in leadership, in government leadership, uh, at all levels. Um, but one thing that, that I like and has held true, I believe, at least in the areas that I see, uh, for the most part, uh, local government does the work of the people every day, day in and day out, um, and does it well. I know there's people that question who we are and what we do and why we do it, but we don't need, uh, people flan, fanning the flames of that. And I greatly appreciate your comments, uh, regardless of who did it, from what party, um, it, it was disturbing, and I, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Compton. Also, other questions or comments for his honor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? We will then invite anyone who's physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance to please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed Are there any council members who wish to speak? This is DeMaye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, looking at the pay scale for the common council, going from $443.34 bi-weekly, which is our current salary, to the suggested $469.22 bi-weekly, is a 5.84% wage increase. It's been a tough year for Mishawakans. Uh, many of our citizens have lost their jobs and never mind thinking of getting raised. Uh, we have citizens who are struggling to make ends meet on a daily basis, and for this reason, I, in good conscience, um, cannot vote in favor of this one.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I will say that I certainly can appreciate the sentiment that Mrs. DeMaye has expressed, but on balance, I tend to support, um, Mayor Woods' comments. While, you know, when you look at the, uh, the dollar impact, you know, percentage-wise, it, uh, I have no reason to dispute Mrs. DeMaye's math. However, this is the exact increase that's been proposed for our employees. Because we make so little, the numbers sometimes are not reflective of what the actual, uh, impact is on us. And now having served 14 years on the council, I don't recall one person of either party who has signed up to serve on the city council because they thought that they were going to get rich. Most people who serve on the city council probably lose money when they look at the hourly wa, rate that, uh, that they would earn in other occupations, but even as a part-time council person. So, um, while I'm also sensitive to the impact on, uh, of the current economic client, uh, climate, not only on our employees but on the community, it's also, fair is fair. If we look at one and a half percent plus $500, there is a different percentage increase that multiple employees in multiple classifications achieve here as a result of what has been done in the salary ordinance that we passed at the last meeting and the budget that we passed this evening. So while I appreciate the, the comments and the sentiment, I'm not embarrassed at all for us as a council to take a look at making sure that not just we, but our successors are, uh, treated appropriately. People receive the, you know, the quality of representatives that, um, who are willing to step up, and I, I think it's unfair and somewhat misleading to try at all to imply, whether it is in printed material, in a state representative campaign, or otherwise, that this council does anything but takes a very hard look and is very judicious with regard to what we and what others in this city are paid for the service that they provide. So I'll be voting in favor of this, uh, ordinance this evening, and with that, I will call for the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mamalanti?
Sorry, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. I think after some comments, and in particular, particularly, uh, Mayor Woods' comments, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least make a comment. Just want to say, uh, thank you very much for, for coming up to the podium and, and speaking the truth, whether it goes with one party or the other. And I explained to my friends and family, this is why I love local government. This is the difference between local, state, and federal. I have no interest going beyond the local level because you see what, exactly what happened. I think we have our differences, we have had our differences. The great thing about this is, soon as that, that game is pounded on the, uh, on the counter, we forget about it, we don't hold grudges, and we are one big happy family. Whether it has a D or an R at the end of it, we're all in for the great reason of Mishawaka. That's why I love, uh, working with all of you guys, the administration, and local government. So thank you for your comments, thank you all for serving. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mamalanti? Any other questions or comments from the Council? If not, then I'll call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Emmons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to also piggyback on what Mr. Mamalanti is saying. Thank you, Mayor, for standing up for the citizens of Mishawaka and for the government elected officials. I appreciate that, and I'm sure a lot of other people appreciate that standing, and I hope a lot of people find out, I hope the Tribune publishes that, and that so people can find out just exactly how and that we work and we work above board. And I appreciate it. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. So I will take a breath since I prematurely tried to, we're working for two people who want to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Other council members? Hearing now, then I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the Council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
No.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The ordinance passes seven to one. Proposed ordinance number 2020 dash 36, and ordinance declaring an emergency and transferring and re-appropriating funds within the budget adopted for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2020. This is a transfer of funds in the Public Safety Loafer Fund in the amount of $235,010.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Mr. President, the members of the common council in the City of Mishawaka, your committee on budget and finance, with whom was referred, uh, 2020-36, before the day of examining said matter, finishing the document, this is signed by the members of us.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the Council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The report passes eight to zero.
Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing of proposed ordinance 2020 dash 36. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilmembers. Rebecca Miller, City Controller. What I have before you tonight is a transfer, which happens at the end of the year quite often. Um, we were purchasing police cars that was in the budget as a capital outlay, and due to the volume of police cars we, we needed to purchase this year, and the favorable, um, lease percentage ra, rate we received, we decided to change it to a lease, most of them for a lease. So we had transferring money we had set aside for the purchase to the lease account lines for principal and interest. We also had some service contract items that came up for public safety that needed to be paid over and above our original budget, and that's what this transfer is for.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Controller?
Thank you, Becky, and thank you for the work that you and the mayor, the chief, and the administration have done now in two, uh, budget years to make sure that we are, are really focusing on securing new squad cars, and the move to the lease is, uh, a, a great idea. So thank you for that work.
Yeah, and I, I perceive we'll have the same for 2021 as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone, uh, participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I will call for the question. Question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the Council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Maybe, or the, the ordinance pass, proposed ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Thank you. With that, uh, we have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business. Is there any new business to come before the Council? Mr. Mamalanti?
New business, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Just would like to announce that, uh, we will be holding our Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch Meeting via Zoom this month. That will take place at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, October 21st, which is Wednesday. Our guest speaker will be Park Superintendent Phil Blasco. He'll be sharing some updates and announcing- will be Park Superintendent Phil Blasco. He'll be sharing some updates and announcing the ribbon cutting for Twin Branch Park. If you haven't had a chance, drive by prior to the meeting and take a look at how beautiful it is and what a great job they did, and he'll go in more detail. If you can't attend the Zoom meeting, feel free to come to the ribbon cutting on the 22nd at 1:00 PM at Twin Branch Park. I can post this as well via my councilman Facebook page, but the meeting ID number for the Zoom is 868-546-4701. Passcode is 223607. Again, that's 7:00 PM this Wednesday, October 21st. Since it'll be remote, I will not have refreshments this evening, Mr. Emmons, but the people can bring their own, and I will watch them eat.
Mr. Mamalenti? The West End Bakery is supposed to open in two weeks.
Two weeks, all right.
Tomorrow.
Sounds excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Any other new business to come before the council? Mr. Compton?
Mr. Mayor, if you could, I do have a couple of questions. You know, we spoke recently about some people from Mishawaka that have tested positive, some employees from Mishawaka have tested positive for COVID. I was wondering how that affects as far as, you know, go through contact tracing and then people who are quarantined. I heard some thought about maybe a fire truck, and it might have had to be out of service. Could you, you know, let us know officially what is going on there and where we're at?
There has been some positives in the Mishawaka Fire Department associated with multiple factors not on the job.
I understand.
It's important to note, I think, that our folks aren't getting the virus while they're on the job. They're very well protected. We follow very stringent protocols on the job. It tends to happen in their off time, when they're off duty. We did have, it wasn't a large amount of positives, but we did have to call in some overtime, and so in the time it took to mandate the overtime and get people in, it was a matter of about a couple of hours where our ladder truck had to be out of service, in which case, before we knew that was the case, we called Clay and we called South Bend, and they were more than happy to fill in should we need, needed that to happen. That didn't, that need never came. And so, so there is some contact tracing going on. Other than that, our employees by and large are all healthy, and, you know, as far as symptoms go, they're, you know, they're getting through it and reporting back to work once they're getting through it. That's been the case, not just at the fire department, but with multiple departments as people get it. You know, we're in various stages of either quarantine or, you know, infection or transition back into work already. So, you know, those cases, as they pick up in our, in our community, they're also picking up a little bit in our, with our staff. But, you know, we're here to provide services uninterrupted. We've been able to do that, and certainly we're taking on extra protocols as needed. So the fire department did a massive testing on Saturday morning, I believe 85 were tested, and, you know, the positive rate in that group was not much, so that was welcome news.
Very good. So, and thank you for that. The, so it was just for a short period until people could be called in to man the positions?
Right.
So it looks like most of the, lack of a better term, damage was done to a group on one crew and/or on one shift, so it affected that?
Isolated group, pretty much to one truck.
Yeah.
Which, that truck is the least used, but I can assure you that no call was impacted by this.
Sure, we would have heard, but, so with quarantining and people who were sick, that's, that was the result?
Right. It's just a matter of having a call in. We offer overtime first, and then all, you know, we go through, you know, procedures, and we will mandate it.
Right.
If we have to mandate it. And so in this case, we mandated it and had to wait till people came in, and we were back up to full staff.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you take off, I just wanted to kind of pick up on the topic that Mr. Compton had mentioned, COVID-19 and testing. I just wanted to express my extreme thanks to Dr. Migliore, her staff, all her nurses, nurse practitioners. They just seem to be overwhelmed at some time, at some points, and you would never know as a patient or a resident attending the clinic. They do an outstanding job in care of COVID-19 testing, along with the normal common colds, common issues that come up this time of year. So if you happen to see her, please. Thanks, and job well done to she and her staff.
I'll absolutely pass that along. She's a superstar, is her staff, and we're lucky to have them. And I'll tell you, too, that it's beyond just service. She thinks of us as family and treats us like family, and we're darn lucky to have her and all of them.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mrs. DeMaye? My apologies. Other new business to come before the council?
Just to follow up a little bit on that general theme, again, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update and for the work that you and, you know, our chiefs, department heads, everyone is doing to try to address this ongoing pandemic. As the council is aware, I've been continuing to participate in the town hall virtual meetings that are hosted by St. Joe Health System, and I shared with the council some of my notes, and I apologize for my subcar note-taking ability with what I shared, but hopefully you were able to pick up on the major points. One of the main ones being that, as the media has reported recently and as was reflected in this town hall, we are not out of the woods as a community with regard to the impact of COVID-19. And it's one thing to hear it from the media, which I think we all pay attention to, but it's another thing to hear from the health professionals themselves, that they view us as being on the cusp of a critical time with regard to the availability of hospital beds and the staff who are required in order to service the people who are in those beds. So I think the takeaway ought to be with regard to our firefighters, our employees, our friends and neighbors ourselves, that, again, we're not out of the woods, and we need to continue to do the things that we're being asked to do by the health professionals in order to get through this, not just in our own best interests, but in the best interests of everyone that we encounter on a daily basis. So my hope is that while we all are experiencing on some level some COVID fatigue from wearing masks and doing things like observing social distancing, it won't get any better. It'll only get worse if we don't continue to fight the fight. So hopefully we, as a community, will continue to do the right things and do our part to try to address the public health emergency. And with that, if there is no other new business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Hello. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Hey, Becky?